Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, everybody.
March the fourteenth, about nine ten A M., ready to meet Liberty County Commissioners Court. And happy spring break. Remember the Flonase, you can buy that at Walgreens, it's something special. Boy, we had a pretty good agenda this morning. We do have a quorum established, Commissioner Whitmire is here, Commissioner Carbowski is present, and Commissioner Wilson is with us by way of Zoom. Also, we have a few extra folks that are joined in with us today, and we'll get to those shortly. But we have business for the court this morning. Let's all rise and lead you leaders in the budgets and chairs and lead us in the end of the session. Let me start.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the very highest standing of God, let me get justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
Texas flag. Today, Texas, one state.
One.
Greatly pleased. Dear only Father, Lord, thank you for this day. Lord, thank you for all the employees in Liberty County. I thank you for the elected officials, Lord. I just ask that you bless each and every one of them. Lord, be with them, and Lord, give them the wisdom to do the things necessary to run the county, Lord. And thank you for their dedication, Lord. As we go through this meeting today, Lord, I just ask that we support the judge and commissioners on the things that they do. Lord, forgive us when we fall short, your son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sheriff. All right. Well, as y'all all know, the legislature's in session. Eha. It's always sometimes rewarding, sometimes unnerving, to look at some of the bills that are being presented. And there's a bunch of them. So if you get the opportunity, and y'all like to follow that, it, there's some very interesting bills that are being proposed. And again, if you see some that you like, then you can call your state representative, your state senator, and tell them you like them. And if you don't, you can call them and do likewise, tell them you don't like them. They like to hear from you, believe me. So just to, no matter where you are, you're just a phone call away, or an email, or if you like to write letters, you can actually type one out and mail it. I prefer to call them. Works a lot better. The notices and proclamations, we had no notices, no notices, and no public comment. No one signed up for public comment today. So we'll ease right along to declare conflicts of interest. Does anyone have any conflicts with today's agenda? Hearing none, we'll move right along. Uh, next item is consent agenda. Have y'all all had the opportunity to look at that? And if so, Dwayne, would you have any add-on stuff today? And Kim, anything? Nothing? Okay.
We're approved.
Got a motion from Greg to approve, second Leon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next one, regular agenda, from Mr. Dennis.
Good morning, everyone.
There he is. Okay, by way of Zoom. Uh, Nick, you got to turn your video on.
There we go. Give me a second.
There you go. All right.
I got your hair, I apologize.
Not the video at all.
Yeah, right?
You're lucky Leon can't see you.
Yeah, we're down here on spring break with the kiddos in Pensacola, Florida.
Okay, good deal. Well, let's see, consider and approve contracts for the TV service at the new Liberty County Sheriff's Office building. This will be for televisions in the building, have service for local channels.
Yes, this is basically just a standard Comcast TV service account, which will also benefit Office of Emergency Management because they are housed in the same building. So that is encompassing all of the different television locations in that building.
Uh, Dwayne, how we gonna pay for that?
How are utilities?
Utilities, okay. We have plenty of money for that.
Move it, approve.
Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two, Ms. Harris, County Treasurer, consider and approve Liberty County's business relationship with MetLife for voluntary insurance products.
Well, that's a wide open.
It really is, yeah, with the choke pull too, yeah.
Right. And I just spoke with Catherine about this, and I think what I'm gonna suggest to the court on your action with this would be to have the county attorney send a letter to MetLife to just kind of tell them where our problems are and just put them on others that we're having. So let me tell you what the problems.
Okay.
Um, whenever we had plan source, we had files, file documents that went over weekly. So that was how we updated the information that went to MetLife so that life knew who wanted what elections. Well, we no longer have plan source, and so I, whenever the court voted to make all the changes, I notified MetLife immediately that we would no longer have plan source, and we would no longer have the automatic policy that's weekly. And they said, okay, well, if that's the case, then we will invoice you. Okay, so invoices. Well, it's March the fourteenth, and we still don't have an invoice. So we've had problem after problem after problem with MetLife. During that open enrollment process, we asked them to send the representative, bring forms, bring documentation, send us documentation so that we could present that source guidance to all of the employees. None of that happened. They couldn't make that happen. I think they sent a representative to one open enrollment day or meeting, and I don't think they were very prepared and really know what they were even offering for Liberty County. So we've had lots of problems with the transition from plans source over to not plan source, although they were notified that this would be a big change and we needed to do it. So also, we, as we had terminations, new hires, they haven't been clear on how we're supposed to notify them of changes. So they told us that we would be able to use their MetLink system. And we just, a week ago, I believe, got access to the MetLink system, only to find out that we cannot enter new hires and terminations through that system. The only thing the MetLink system would be useful for for us would be to gather our invoice, or we can even gather an invoice from the MetLink system. So what I wanted to notify the court is that we have not paid MetLife for 2023. We payroll deducted for our employees, and we can assume that our employees have the coverage that they signed up for because we sent MetLife the invoice, but we don't have an invoice. So Catherine and I were just discussing this, and she said that the county attorneys all could send a letter to MetLife and say, look, we've got issues. We need to know, we need to confirm the coverage, we need an invoice, and so forth. So what I'm asking the court to do is just approve the letter of notice to MetLife that we need this to be better. And just to further addition, I know for sure of two employees who have filed claims with MetLife. One was on an accident claim, one was on a hospital indemnity claim. And the employee who filed the hospital indemnity claim, they told her, yes, well, you know, we'll get it paid. We need just documentation or invoice from the hospital. So she sent that in, only to be greeted with another letter that said, no, we need something else from the hospital. Sent that in, only to be greeted with, oh, no, we need one more thing. So it's like they're putting off paying the claim. And then she eventually got a letter that said, we closed your case. And until you send us all of its documentation, you're dismissed. So she's had a great deal of problems getting her claim paid. So that's concerning, too. So we could include that in the letter as well. And I hate to be a bearer of this bad news, but I felt like the court needed to know so that we can take action.
We're in the first quarter, so.
We're very concerned about.
We are. Okay. Yeah.
Um, that's right. I think the county attorney's office could potentially send a letter notifying MetLife these issues. Certainly, I'd like to look at the contracts that we have and what those terms are and how MetLife has. It would be way from those terms, and then potentially send a letter.
Yeah. All right, we're just gonna approve for Catherine to authorize Catherine to send a letter on behalf of the Treasurer's Office of Liberty County, MetLife. Anybody got any questions, discussions?
Say, Ms. Kim?
Yes, sir.
This is the first I've heard of these problems with MetLife. They had done me well on my critical care claim. I've not had any problems out of them. But this, this is a good thing for the employees. If we decide to move along, is anybody speaking with F. Black about possibly coming and speaking with reference to the abilities to be able to get hooked up with them?
Um, Leon, I'm not suggesting that we unwind the 2023 coverage that we have with MetLife because you're right. I mean, I think that there are a number of employees, I'm sure, out there who have had successful claims filed, and it is a good deal for them. As far as what, you know, it would look like for 2024, that's another reason why we need to put this on the agenda is because surely there's, you know, a better way, an easier, you know, and easier and more sure path with the voluntary products. Because I don't feel comfortable with the, with the MetLife group that we have administering our account now.
Okay. Okay. So what we have is failure to communicate.
A serious failure.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll make a motion to.
Make a motion to let our county attorney's office look into this and report back to Treasurer's Office. Send that second, David.
All right, motion from Bruce, same thing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you all.
But see if we can get them off of dead center. Next one's from Ms. Chambers, County Clerk. Consider approve the purchase of new book bindings from Scott Bearman in the amount of $12,641 to be paid from the County Clerk's Records Management Fund for the Commissioners Court Minutes in Liberty County Clerk's Office.
Okay.
Pretty self-explanatory, but yeah, you need to bind these up, yeah.
The newer, the archive program that we're doing is specifically geared toward 1950 back by law. We have to do those. These are newer ones that we treat from recent years, but they're in these binders where to get to the documents, we have to pull it all apart, and they're getting ripped and torn. And we did this with the vitals, and it worked out great. It's a better system. It kind of comes apart in the middle, so it's easier to get the document out. We've got taken out every document, and we put little rings around them to keep the paper from ripping, and the interns do it, and it comes with a nicer binder that matches together. So we're just kind of systematically going through and addressing the newer documents. By newer, I mean seventy eight, I mean the seventies, the eighties, the ones that are in the books. So these are for, specifically for the Commissioners Court Minutes that are in the office.
All right.
Move it, approve. Bruce.
Uh, Greg made a motion. Leon, you'll make a second on that?
Second.
All right. Thank you. All right, got a motion from Greg, second from Leon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four, consider and approve payment amount of $34,422 to Tech Save and Sponsored Research Services, and this is to pay the Aggies for working on our strategic plan for economic development round two. And we discussed this back in the fall, and approved that they would do this work for us, now we've got to pay them. Anything, no problem?
Send invoice.
It's invoice, that's all. Yeah, gotcha.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Thank you.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, uh, from Mr. Douglas, considering and approve request to reduce performance bond from Cooley Construction on Barton Place until the two-year warranty period ends. I'm not used to reducing a bond, but.
Well, our subdivision development regulation said that once the subdivision is complete, the developer can apply for a reduction in bond down to the value of the room. This particular subdivision is in pretty soon too. Uh, I was up there, we didn't have a graph looking at subdivision, and they have got a fantastic plan.
It is, I've been through it.
And so I have no problem recommending to you that we allow them to reduce the bond in value of the room.
Okay.
I remember we approved it.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, David. Uh, number six, from Mr. C., consider and approve new contract with Pitney Bowls for courthouse mail machine, terms of sixty months. That's from April thirtieth of this year to April the twenty eighth through twenty eight, twenty twenty eight. Yeah. For thirteen hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-two cents a quarter, utilizing Bible project number six five six point two one. It's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, I put it on this kind of early so I wouldn't forget about it, but I think it ends in April, end of April. Uh, so to bring a new machine, updated, more features, I think they said it's about eighty-something bucks a quarter, less, not a whole lot of difference, but it is a little less. Uh, I asked Dee Dee if she was ready for another machine, but I think she is.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion to approve, David.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Okay, here we got number seven. Consider approve contracts for autopsy transports and pauper cremations.
Okay, we've done this back, proposal back, I think we started them in January. We had a committee, committee met, decided on, looked at what everybody proposed for the funeral homes, and we came up with a kind of a middle ground of what we thought was fair to everybody. I brought those back to you in, I think in February, their amounts, and y'all approved those. So these are the contracts. It's Neil Funeral Home in Cleveland, Pace in Cleveland, Pace in Dayton, Sterling and Allison. And everybody's agreed to it, everybody's signed off on these rates for once, for a long, long time, will everybody be paid the same amount?
Yeah.
And just to say, Wells Funeral Home also sent and talked to them, and for some reason they got messed up on the due date, and they called and apologized so they didn't get the bill, but we'll include it next year. Wells here in Liberty. So we'll make sure they're included next year.
Dwayne? You okay?
Yeah, so my understanding here is, they're going to be exempt voices from the request to the department to pay the exemption, and then it's going to be sent from indigent, the healthcare, and then on purpose, they're indigent, and then they'll be forty-two dollars office to pay. Right, yes.
Okay.
And I did talk to Mr. Poston last week, and his office is working on a little better procedures. He said they need people to sure its office dispatch and kind of firm, where it has something written, so everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
But when we did this RFP, we included a lot of that language in there, how things will be done, how they're on call, so that's part of this contract or this agreement.
Everybody pays the same.
Yeah, everybody pays the same, or we pay the same.
Yeah.
Everybody bills the same.
All right, what's the court's pleasure?
We're approved. Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? Leon, it sound okay to you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, consider and approve the purchase of a 2021 New Holland tractor with a boom mower from W.C. Tractor utilizing Sourcewell contract number A N seventy-eight twenty-one AGI for Runbridge two. Looks like we're trying to get this done before the price increase, is that it?
Well, I didn't put the price on there because they offered it to the commissioner at a certain amount, but I totally couldn't do it unless we bid it out, or it was on a co-op, they're on Sourcewell co-op. And under Bible, they always told us, hey, you got, you got your contract with Bible, it's this amount, but if you negotiate with a vendor and they'll sell it to you less, you can do that. Well, evidently Sourcewell doesn't seem to be that way. So price went up significantly, finally through a purchasing co-op. One of the problems with the purchasing law is sometimes you don't get the best deal that you get.
Yeah.
So I think the last figure I got from, you may have a different one, is one seventy-five, six seventy-eight. That's not right.
We had one show there, and then they couldn't get one from December.
And. December of this year?
Huh?
December of this year?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I know tractors are hard to get what you want.
They said if we didn't get this one, they had the most important one, it'd probably be December or December first year if we get another one.
Yeah.
Yeah, y'all approved him one back last year, our last, in fall, and they didn't manage to get it.
Motion to approve that.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine, from Mr. C., discuss adopt Liberty County asphalt overlay specifications.
Okay, so with the ARPA money, Precinct Three would like to, instead of, it was approved to buy road materials, but they would rather use their real material money to do asphalt overlay services. So to bid it out, to follow the federal guidelines, we needed specs. David, Mr. Douglas worked with LJA to develop some specs, and if y'all approve this today as Liberty County specs, then anytime we doing that asphalt overlay job and bid it out, we could use these. And according to grant limits, it'll satisfy the ARPA requirements.
Can't have the motion until approved. Second.
Motion. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion?
Oh, look, this, this pertaining to actual new road or reconstruction of road, a whole roadway?
It's all gonna be reconstruction on January four. Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Number ten, eleven, and twelve, I'm gonna ask that we table these three, working on the funding source right now, okay? It, just like to have a little bit more time to study this, Catherine?
Okay.
Okay? And so if we can put it on the next court, I believe we can have it all cleaned up by then. Okay? So I need some motion.
Just table ten, eleven, and twelve.
Right.
Motion from Bruce, Bruce, and Bruce. Leon, is that on all three?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor, say aye. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, from Mr. Poston or Catherine. Consider and approve order adopting Liberty County private road naming and address assignment order requiring the sequential numbering of private roads for the purposes of easy identification for emergency services. We've been working on this for a while with the nine-one-one business, and it, it's confusing enough that since, you know, we have the nine-one-one group with HGAC that is paying for an awful lot of this as far as the upgrades and all. And Sheriff, you know how hard it is for your guys to find a road, anyway. It's a good time to look at this and see if we can get some kind of a method for adopting the naming of these roads in continuum, because the old way just doesn't seem to be working. I mean, will those old roads keep their names, or will they be changed, or we're just gonna start over in a new method and sequential?
It sounds like the latter.
Okay, all right. All right, you want to explain how this works so the whole world can understand that this fellow's here in precinct four, and you got a PR one hundred and one or whatever, that doesn't mean you're in precinct one.
Right, exactly. And so that's what this would do. It would essentially start over and it would then give me a sequential order, and it would determine, um, it would help people to determine what precincts they are in as well.
Okay. So we pass this today, that would start the new naming of the roads today. Is that pretty much the way you look at it?
That's the way I would look at it.
Okay. So if we have a brand-new private road that comes in today, and I understand the problem because it's like Greg has some, a family that buys ten acres over in his precinct, and there's one house there, also there's a second house, and then there's a third house on those ten acres, then it becomes a private road matter, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So Greg's precinct two, so you're gonna have a PR and then a number?
Yes.
Okay, so how would you distinguish this number? It's just gonna be in sequence?
Yes, sir.
From here on through perpetuity?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Sheriff?
I worked a little in this.
Come on, come on up here a little bit so Greg can hear you. I can hear you good, but you know.
It works. In my work with the county attorney, you proposed, and I agree with him, that we start outnumbering these roads sequentially, and that we begin with the number seven thousand. There are no seven thousands in Liberty County anywhere, so we don't need to worry about duplication.
Yeah.
My department would issue this number two CAD. CAD would place that private road number on the map, and that would be there. Now, there is one aspect of this that's a little bit different. We've left this thing open, so this commissioner, Mr. Wilson, this is particularly important for you. If, if the property owner desires signage for his private road, it is after all a private road. It's not a county road. And so each commissioner, however you choose to deal with it, you can build a sign, put a sign out there on request from the property owner, or you may choose, kind of like we used to do in Dayton, Judge, and somebody came in and wanted an address on his property, and we built a sign and chartered fifty dollars.
Yeah.
And so that's a decision that I feel is best left to each commissioner. Each one of you may want to do it a little bit differently. So basically, CAD has bought off on this. I spoke with Lionel McCarty last week. Basically, uh, C A D has bought off on this. I spoke with Lionel McCarty last week. Where with the cone? Longitude, latitude are are shown which one of these phone. And that's a big help in navigation. Oh, now you know what I know, gentlemen.
I do think that there are a plethora of benefits to this. Uh, when they helping emergency services identify, um, what is the county road? What is a private road? Where you're going to help service, um, whether or not, um. You know, our deputies can can go down that road and then ride us to the station. Um, or it will also help our commissioners, you know, distinguish what's the county road, what the what the private road. Where can they go? Where can their equipment go? So there are, there are benefits.
Leon, you got anything?
Well, I'm on, my question is, if we pass this today, David. Any 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 existing private roads, we're gonna go back and renumber? Okay, so this this only pertains to any new private roads, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So you're you're indicating that we wanna start out at seven thousand?
That is the discussion that the county attorney and I had. And originally we chose seven thousand, that series, uh, is because there are no numbers in Liberty County that hit that group. So anything that we do, we can number it sequentially and then we'll just have to internally keep up with. County Road seven thousand, which is in Commissioner Greg Alford's precinct, County Road seven oh one, which is in your precinct. All of that will be maintained by C A D and by my department.
Well, I think it would. If I I believe it would make it a little easier for our EMS and our officers. I don't have a problem with the seven thousand, but. For them to easily identify which precinct this private road's in. So if we start out at, let's say my precinct, seven-four. With the remaining numbers, that gives them a definite, yes, it's in precinct four. Or seven-two, that gives them a definite uh, idea that yes, this is in precinct two.
That's that's very true.
Yeah, the only thing the precinct has changed there is ten years.
Yeah, they're gonna change drastically again. I mean, I not a good idea, Leon, it just, I know the the boundaries are gonna change, it aren't much.
That's true.
Yeah.
But we got ten years for that to happen.
Yeah.
My my concern that uh. Uh, it would make it easier for our first responders and our law enforcement to determine. Which route they need to be taken immediately, you you know, it's a.
Well, you can always come back and address it in ten years, Jim.
Yeah, sure can.
Now, you're gonna be seven thousand one hundred.
For precinct one, it would be seven one zero zero.
Okay, so it's somewhere in precinct one.
It's somewhere in precinct one.
And that 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 means you only have one hundred roads.
No, you you could go beyond that. Uh, seven seven one oh oh. Then it would be seven two oh one, if the nationals was in your precinct.
Okay, I'm just getting a uh. I'm just getting a message from a constituent that's saying that in Plum Grove area, there is a seven thousand road.
There is.
But that's a county road, not a private road.
I'm sorry, Dave?
It'd be county road and not a private road.
The way I want a county road and private road now.
We we may need, we may need to help it up, Leon, and go to the eight thousand series. Is that acceptable to you?
Mr. Douglas and Judge brought up a good thing here. If it's one road and there are three residences up there, one road, we're gonna live at A B and C.
No, no, it could be one road, but just different addresses.
That's changed. This is all the change that has come through H G A C and being dictated to the C A D, central capital district. And for years and years and years, when. An individual came in, they had ten acres, they've got their house, they've put their mother's house on there. Now they're adding one of the grandchildren. When that third house hits the books, the idea is that we'll no longer give you an entrance.
In other words, they're making long driveways private roads.
Where label and travel is all over the county, they're private roads. And that function is being dictated to us.
Okay, I just wanted to make it quicker. If we go on the county road and stop the first house, not the second house, it's the third house. If they were to appreciate it instead of having the private road, which house?
Things that there are seven thousand of anybody in Santa Fe areas. Most of them is a big seven hundred, but maybe that's not. Not the case, but we get to move up to an eight thousand.
Correct.
To get free, I think it needs to be.
Can we approve this when they uh. Multiplication that you you you. Determine the numbers.
But we have discussed it with the C A D. And they are good to go. And because the C A D has developed a form. It is attached to this and it lays out a map and it lays out the longitude, latitude. And so full disclosure is there. It's a little comfortable, but. It beats having to go out into the field every time and take on a commissioner, quit my men, spend half day looking for driveway. And Greg up in ride, somewhere like that, you know, way off. But this is the best we've been able to come up with to to simplify this entire process.
Well, I like Leon's proposal of eight thousand one, eight thousand two, eight thousand, you know, add that's the.
I will tell you immediately which precinct.
Yes, for precinct one, eight thousand two hundred for precinct. That only gives you a hundred roads.
We had a bit of.
Yeah.
We gotta add an extra digit in the group instead of eight thousand, it would be like eight hundred thousand.
All right, you wrote that.
David, when we start. Would it be started off as P R, uh, let's say eight eight four? Would it be started off with a P R or would it just be eight four?
No, sir, it would be P R.
I'm sorry?
It would be a P R designation.
These are, these are private roads going across the property. There's still dividing it into groups and there should be easements and all these things involved with this.
Not necessarily.
Okay. So when they get ready to sell it and they start coming to my office complaining about, there's a road across here and they're not letting me go down it. And where's the easement? Yeah, I got it.
Private road, there's no dedication. It's a private road.
It's a civil matter. Well, I mean, you take ten acres of land and throughout the. Generations, they start separating it and they need to get an attorney who's properly knew.
I don't know any other way to do this. I just, I know C A D is just amiable.
I'm just saying there should be appropriate filings in our official public records designating that they have created a road on this property.
So we can copy your phone, the uh, with the C A D phone, that's what you really.
I don't think that accounts for filing, but uh, maybe what I need to do is prepare a proposal, come back to the sport with a. If people are gonna do this, they need to bring a some, because they commit all the time with this stuff and it's, we don't have answers. No, so any changes to the property has to be in our.
Yeah, uh, each fire department has districts. Like District eighty-four, ten big, District eighty-five, three twenty-one area.
Come on around for me if you would.
So each fire departments have districts, you know that. You know, eighty-four is ten big, eighty-five is three twenty-one area, stuff like that. To make it easier for dispatch and fire department EMS, you could go with private roads on like eighty-five hundred or eighty-four hundred. And then then start going from there instead of this eight thousand. Cause that's gonna confuse everybody. We we're not gonna know where to go to. You know, that's that's the whole thing. Dispatch is not gonna know where to send the units to. But you you keep it in that district areas that the fire departments have established. That might simplify things.
That, what are you trying to say?
So fire parks have districts.
Okay.
District eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, you know, stuff like that. And if we go with private roads and you number them that way. Dispatch are gonna know where to send, you know, fire department, EMS, whatever. But you start confusing things. We're not gonna know where to go to. You're gonna name about five department districts. I would think so.
Let me ask you something. Do those district lines change?
They do change. They do change. I don't know, we haven't done that in a while. But right now, you know, if it's not broke, we're gonna fix it.
We gotta have something that don't change.
We haven't changed them in several years.
Well, in ten years, even the eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four can change. When redistricting comes up again, so I mean.
We didn't change it when we registered you guys. We kept it the same. Well, what's 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 taking place is a lot of confusion and go to private roads. And we start this other system. I know I'm gonna be confused. I know dispatch is gonna be confused. We're gonna be sending a fire department or EMS unit. Clear across the county.
Yeah.
They'll have to be districts.
So I I I mentioned this in the past, I had mentioned this. You know, I know David's done a lot of work on this and talked with Matthew and the C A D, but I think to really simplify things, uh, it would be. P R one, two, three, or four. So P R four, that's my precinct. And then added the additional numbers, whatever needs to be. Uh, P R four knows, you know, you're in precinct four and uh.
I know where to go to.
Sheriff, let me ask you a question. On the new dispatch, you're gonna have some big TV screens in there, okay? And a call comes in and that, where the call source is from, there'll be like a pin dropped on that call source, right? Okay, so you won't be confused. You shouldn't be. They shouldn't be, okay? Okay, does that help a little bit, Bill?
Yeah, I guess we'll have to do some training on it, dude.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, that's the whole point behind the new nine-one-one system. You know, that H G A C is helping fund, you know, the whole thing is.
The the fire department won't have to know the whole county, but all they got to know is what's in their precinct. But that's gonna be confusing in case you got a new private road they don't know about.
You know, another thing that we need to consider, I remember. Good while back, and Bobby could probably answer this easier than anybody. But at one time, the nine-one-one system couldn't handle handle over five numbers. So if you have a P R, and let's say you got seven four zero zero, that's giving you six total digits. Bobby, are they able to handle over? Five numbers now? Do we know that or?
Kevin, uh, Steve, do you know where you're working?
I guess, sir, you're talking about the inputted system as far as county digits or? I guess I'm confused because. And right now, we we, you know, we have county roads that uh, be county road five thousand two hundred B. C, so I mean, I I've never heard of it not being able on our end to input more than four or five. I notice some that we have six in there now.
It used to be that way. I I, you know, they may. Where they can, where they can handle, you know, larger numbers. But I would just ask some simple question. Is that available now to where they can handle more numbers?
Yeah.
As you've already got, like in the Santa Fe area, some fifty-seven hundred series number. And uh, there.
Yeah.
So what do you want to do?
I'm gonna propose we have a workshop on this. Seriously, we could be here another two hours, ask this out. Leon, is that all right? Workshop this little bit?
That's fine with me.
I mean, really, Sheriff's gonna have some input. Uh, Chief Knox will have some, Chief Huggett Mueller's gonna have some, you're gonna have some, and every commissioner here is gonna have some, as well as Catherine and. And the cat.
Well, if we took the existing road, like four oh one. And made it four oh one one, you know, private road four oh one one and just start adding to the end. That way emergency services know that it's all of the one. You know, or two oh one or whatever it may be, just extend that number with a private road in front of it. Well, everybody would know.
Yeah.
Where where to go to.
My my point though is the new dispatch system.
Yeah.
Is gonna have a a pinpoint, you know, to drop a pin on the location. And that should clarify everything, but.
Judge, commissioner, the dispatch would not say you've got private road five four three off of county road twenty-eight, fifteen, whatever. They tell them, cause you're gonna have the county road, they'll have private roads off of county roads also. And you just don't give a location.
Let's let's put together a workshop on this, Sheriff. All right, we let everybody get their their say, but. Come up with something that's gonna, if we can make it run longer than ten years, it's gonna save a headache for somebody.
Yeah.
You know, but uh. I mean, I figured me and Sheriff are gonna be fishing in ten years, but that. We'll be fishing for private road numbers.
Make a motion to table. Get a workshop going. No, sir.
All right, got a motion to table for Bruce, second from Greg, all favor say aye. Likewise, no. That motion does carry. Thank you all. Number fourteen. Uh, Catherine, uh, center approved direction to county attorney's office to draft. Interlocal agreement with whole fresh water supply district for a sub recipient. Application for a HUD community development block grant for the drilling and construction of new drinking water well. I got a question about the wording, I was talking to Dwayne earlier.
Sure.
Yeah, play it. You wanna go ahead and.
Yeah, I think that's.
Run it down to me.
I think you were correct.
Yeah, yeah. Can we change that in court today or should we bring it back?
Wade, Nancy was apparently working on the issue and then they're involved when we do that local.
Okay.
We do have representatives of the whole water. Here.
Yes. You're letting y'all know, we're not dragging our feet. We gotta do it correctly though, because I don't want, I don't want the ARPA people coming back saying, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, I'd have an auditor that would be coming after me with a hatchet.
Can I just ask a question real quick though? If uh, if I read that correctly, I think that it means. That um, Liberty County is interested in putting in a an application on the behalf of coal fresh water. Or a C D V two grand with us being the sub recipient, or that has nothing to do with this.
No matter. Okay, so we're gonna table this, correct? Leon?
I think we're on the table, let let the verbiage get corrected.
Okay.
I'm gonna make the motion we table.
Uh, second.
Got a motion, Leon, saving Greg table till we get the. Acronyms worked out about that. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fifteen, Mr. Poston. Uh, considering approved terms as requested for an application for economic incentives by Trinity Crossing. The residential development subdivision near County Road six oh two, Commissioners Precinct four. Said request involving the creation of a public improvement district. For an annual assessment of public improvements associated with development. As well as the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone for the dedication. The fifty percent of the increase in county property taxes up to the amount of the P I D assessment. A whole lot of words.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a suggestion. We'll move this into executive session with the rest of that.
And and building off what Commissioner Wilson is saying, sixteen and seventeen, I would ask that. We just executives that and we do have uh, Mr. Kimber over here with uh. The executives said, and we do have uh, Mr. Kimbrough here with uh, Bickerstaff to help advise.
Okay, all fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, Leon?
There's the motion. I'll second it.
And and that would be under um. Five oh one point oh seven one consultation with an attorney and um. Uh, five oh one point oh eight seven.
Okay, Leon, you wanna make that motion to move those into executive session?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. We move this into the executive session.
All right. You got a motion of Leon. Second from Greg to move fifteen, sixteen. And seventeen into executive session. Further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay.
Make the motion going to executive session.
Something on the consent agenda. I was supposed to increase Miss Bonnie Bishop's pay off. Amount by seventy three dollars and sixty X cents. So it should be ten, nine, six, two, eight. There was some confusion and analysis of her. It is number six on that. Seventy three dollars and sixty X cents. For for which one?
Second.
Sorry about that.
We'll let you make it this time.
We do need, we do need to make a vote.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Okay. Okay, on the uh, incentive agenda, we had a motion Greg to second Leon to approve. And go back and resend that and then bring up the correct numbers and approve.
Do I resend your issue?
Yes. Okay. Now the emotion to approve. And approve.
Now anybody can do that. I'll second it.
Greg and then Bruce. Hey, all in favor of the additions on the. Consider agendas and corrections. Say aye. Likewise, nays.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay. Six. Yeah, three ayes. One nay. But the motion does carry. Okay. But now.
Yes, Scott.
No, wait, we gotta go back to the executive session business.
Yeah.
Got a motion from Leon, second Greg, moving to the executive session. We never did.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm stopping.
Yeah, it's much the move all agreed to. I'm impressed. And so I had Leon, Greg, and Tim. So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, tell them so. Okay. Okay, it's uh, as of eleven o'clock, we didn't move back in regular session. Uh, number fifteen on the regular agenda. Uh, considering approved terms requesting an application for economic incentives by Trinity Crossing. Residential development subdivision near County Road six oh two. The commission precinct four said request involving creation of a public improvement district. For an annual assessment of public improvements associated with. The development as well as the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone. The dedication of fifty percent of the increase in county property taxes. Up to the amount of the PID assessment. And we had some discussion that uh. With consideration thereof, uh, what is the court's pleasure at this point?
I make the motion. We take no action at this time.
Yeah. Got a motion from Leon. Second from Greg to take no action. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen. Regular agenda considering unauthorized county attorney's office and outside counsel. With the law firm of Bickerstaff. Uh, to negotiate with Trinity River Solar One. LLC with regard application for chapter three eighty one. Economic development incentives related to their construction. Of a solar panel farm approximately twenty four acres. In between US ninety and FM ten oh nine in precinct one Liberty County. What's the court's pleasure?
Make a motion for the county attorney's office to uh, and outside counsel. To negotiate this deal.
Further negotiate?
Further negotiate.
All right, got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Leon, do you vote?
I'll say nay.
Not to negotiate. Okay. Three ayes. One nay. All right, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen, considering authorized county attorney's office and outside counsel. Law firm of Bickerstaff to negotiate with Colliers Economic Incentives. With regard to their client's application for. Uh, chapter three eighty one economic development incentives related to their construction of industrial facility known as Project Lion. Within the Gulf Inland Logistics Park in Dayton. Okay, what's the court's pleasure on this project? We have two gentlemen here from Project Lion. Uh, my suggestion would be if you have questions. Uh, please feel free to ask.
Anthony?
Yes, sir.
Un- under the conditions, it said that uh, March seventh was the last date. Of uh, negotiations. Is that is that deadline still apply?
Monty, you why don't you uh, Monty from our team was unable to be a early part of it. He was actually in. Uh, Liberty County two weeks ago and met with the Dayton team, he and Tyler. So, Monty, why don't you? Talk about the deadline.
Yeah, I'll talk about that. So it's it's not too late. Um, we're still going through the due diligence process on our shortlisted sites. Um, but we needed to put up some sort of deadline. Um, on there, on there. Um, so we have. Just going through the process, each community, each state is different, as you know. And some uh. States take a little bit longer than others, so. That's fine. Um, again, we're still through the due diligence process right now.
Monty, you uh, you indicated that each community, uh, who else y'all speaking with?
Uh, we're down to a shortlisted number of sites.
Would you care?
Our top three.
Hey, would you care to uh, to uh, indicate who that might be?
Um, we're not liberty to say that at this time.
There are, there are two.
Let me, let me, let me be clear, though, too. We started with this client. Um, back in uh, twenty twenty two, we've gone through a full location strategy. Analyses of options, starting with multiple states and uh, two countries involved as well.
Oh, we we are, we are one of three?
Correct.
Okay.
So through that process, we've narrowed it down where then we looked for real estate options. And the Gulf Inland Logistics Park, the site there that we're looking at. Met all our needs. And through our due diligence and evaluations up until this point. Um, that is the reason for them being shortlisted.
Oh, we're one of three, correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
All right, tell us, advise the court, what what is, what is it y'all are looking for?
Um, so we are looking for a proposal in terms of incentives. Incentive package from the county. We are going through the same process with the city of Dayton as well. Um, we've met with um, two weeks ago with the community, with the developer. Um, and. Walk through the the project. Um, walk through what the company is planning to do. Why it's such a great project from a capital investment. New jobs, high wages, and a good opportunity to. Be a key tenant, an anchor tenant in the newly established Gulf Inland Logistics Park.
And to be clear, this is a manufacturer. Uh, Mr. Leon, and this is not another distribution warehouse. This is an anchor. Uh, high wage manufacturer that would be the the first. Uh, anchor tenant in Gulf Inland Park.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, you know, y'all indicating you're looking for an incentive package. What? Y'all explain to the court what it is that y'all are gonna offer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this project is offering a hundred and eighty million dollars in capital investment. Right now, the budget sits at about half and half in terms of. Real property versus personal property in terms of machinery machinery and equipment. We're looking at a hundred and thirty nine new jobs to the community. Um, our estimated payroll annually is uh, in the over seven million, seven point four million. Um, looking at just shy of a hundred acres. Um. This um. This this company that Project Lion is uh, is in. A high growth industry. Um, it commands a. Uh, major market share of that industry. Um, this is the first phase of many phases um, that they look to. To um. Plant and expand wherever they locate. So we're not only talking, these numbers are phase one. Long term, they're looking to. Put down roots and continue their expansion. This will be their flagship manufacturing facility. Um, in in the US.
I would add to that, as far as manufacturing goes, this is going to be a very low environmental impact project. It is a blending facility that will, um, they're going to be applying for permit by rule. Um, and their gas emissions are fugitive emissions, meaning there's going to be very low emissions off this um, facility.
Yeah, so we've already met with the Texas Department of Environmental Quality, and that has been their. Initial ruling based on our description of our process, so. This is not a smelly, stinky. You know, uh, dirty plant. The fugitive emissions are. Nominal, and so the permit by rule will go very quickly. So it's not an extended amount of time to get the ruling to start construction.
Don't mind sharing, if you could, what uh. What is the city of Dayton has offered?
Um, we're actually going through the process with the city of Dayton right now. Um, we provided the. Application to the city last week. Um, they are going through their uh, analyses. And then they will be meeting similar to. Uh, this meeting here in the near future.
Have they offered any incentives?
Uh, not to date. They're they're waiting to have a meeting similar to this. Um, but we fully expect them to come back with an incentive uh, proposal next week, two weeks at the latest.
Okay. When, let me ask you, fellas, when? When do you want to try to have your decision made on a location? I mean, it seems that time is of the essence for everyone involved, but I'm just curious, uh. You know, we need, we need a little projection here, you know, to kind of give. Everybody a bump to to negotiate if that's what the next step is.
Yep, um, let me pull up. Um, so we are looking um, at having a decision. Um, on the finalist site here in the next um. Thirty to to sixty days. Um, so we have some time, not a lot of time. Um, but our construction start date is uh, first quarter of twenty twenty four. Of course, it's gonna be a greenfield. An investment. Um, equipment installation is targeted right now for Q four of twenty twenty four. And then um, operations to begin in Q three of twenty twenty five. So we're looking, of course, the the sooner that we can make the site selection decision. Faster we can start construction and um, the faster we can be up in in operational. And be able to serve our customers.
Uh, Chuck and Catherine and Leon. Does that give y'all ample time to for consideration and discussions?
Yes, sir. I've got questions.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Turner, I'm Chuck Kimbrough. I'm a lawyer in Austin and I'm helping the county uh, on this matter. Uh, through the county attorney's office. Uh, Mr. Turner, um. The commissioner asked you what the company wanted. Do you have any specific things that you're asking the local governments for as of today?
So we we outlined in the incentives RFP, um, typical incentives that that we receive through this. Process. Um, at this stage, we're still go, we're still going through the due diligence of comparing site to site.
Okay, let me, let me follow up. I'll just ask you specifically. Are you asking? For the local government or governments to donate land for the site of the facility?
Um, that is. So. Right now, it is a private landowner that we are having discussions with and purchasing that site. Now, if the local governments and or state governments want to help incentivize it through that process. Um, it's. It's not something that we are going to um. Stop. We have received, we have received land on previous projects before.
Okay. So you're talking about a Liberty County landowner, correct?
Uh, no, this Gulf Inland Logistics Park.
I can't hear you. Say again?
The Gulf Inland Logistics Park.
Okay.
Val per control.
Very well. So. Other than land. In terms of economic development incentives. Are you looking for tax abatement?
Yes, sir.
Are you looking for tax rebate?
Yes, sir.
What else are you looking for? So that the county can have some idea about what to. Internally discussed in terms of a proposal.
Monty, I I would also make a recommendation if Mr. Kimbrough is is representing the. Community, it sounds like he doesn't have a copy of our. Incentive RFP, we outline line by line, things that we are looking for. Tax credits. Revundable or transferable credits. Uh. We also talk about things like permit processes. Zoning. Um. It has a a broad view. In the.
Permit, yeah, permitting fees. Um, construction development costs, uh, cash incentives, I mean. Utility infrastructure. That's just the kind of really. That is what we've received in the past, and that's just to get the thought process. Started.
That's in the, uh, document that you produced to the county? The, the list of those items?
Correct.
What page is it?
Page six.
But documents might we be talking about, because I don't have any.
Okay.
They weren't submitted to the court.
It was submitted to the court.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any either.
Well, I wa, I was given a copy of it, uh, through the county attorney's office Friday. But I didn't have the authority to look at it until today, so that's the reason I don't know what page is on, thank you for that.
Okay, no problem.
Got it, thanks, that explains it.
Let me, if you don't mind, let me ask you a question, I. I don't have, I don't have these, these terms under it, I don't have them, um. So, any, any of these terms negotiable?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Everything is negotiable right now, and to be clear. You know, we, we're in the final. Throws of this site selection process, ladies and gentlemen, we have three sites. Our client. Is. Somewhat agnostic to the three. Locations, they're looking for overall best fit. And the economic incentives do play a role in their decision-making process. So we're looking for good, fair offers, and everything is negotiable.
Okay. Um. In light of, uh, Catherine and Matthew not receiving the package to review until Friday. And then Chuck not receiving it until Friday, and, but not having the authority to review it until today. I'd like the opportunity for us to. To, uh, have this opportunity to, to review. You know, my consideration right now is to continue to negotiate for terms. Uh, you know, with the county attorney's office, uh. Ms. McCarty and Mr. Poston and, uh, and with Chuck. Kimbrough with Bickerstaff. And, uh. And let them get with y'all, discuss this, and then get back to us. Recommendations. Leon, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely, that's a definite, that would be a, a, a good alternative right now.
And, um, just a quick follow-up question to that, in terms of timing, what, what does that look like?
Well, I mean, you know, discussing a minute ago with, with Catherine, with Chuck. You know, you said thirty to sixty days, and I asked Chuck and Catherine, you know, is that ample time for us to? To get with y'all and discuss the terms and negotiate. And you know, come to an appeasement between all parties. And I believe that was a yes. So Chuck, you still feel that good about it, or?
Well, I gotta talk to you about tax abatement procedure under three twelve, Judge of the tax code, uh, before the county can, uh. If it's a county. If it's a county-initiated tax abatement reinvestment zone. Uh. There are procedures to go through to create the zone. And, uh. Uh, but. There's an extra procedure after the zone is created, that, that, that takes at least. Once the party's resolved to a proposed deal, you gotta, you know, you gotta create the zone, and that requires some newspaper notice and a public hearing.
Right.
Also, uh, before you can, uh. Vote to actually enter into and execute tax abatement. There has to be a special, uh. It's sort of like double Open Meetings Act notice, uh, court members, um. You have your usual Open Meetings Act seventy-two hours notice to predicate the vote, but you also have to do. A special notice thirty days out. Thirty days out. That contains special information about the proposed vote. And then seven days out, you have to give all the affected, uh, taxing jurisdictions that have land inside the zone. Special notice, special written notice. So there's at least a. Uh, about a sixty-day lead before you can get to the part where you're voting on the tax abatement. So. If, if you're saying sixty days from now, that's. Uh, we would be right now in the. Uh, if that, if that timeline were followed, we would be right now. In the mode of getting ready to create a zone. And hold a public hearing for that zone. So that after the zone is created, the thirty days could begin running before the predicate was fulfilled to hold a vote on the tax abatement agreement. So that's just a bunch of lawyers talk to say thirty days is, uh, excuse me, sixty days is probably not realistic.
Let me ask you, Chuck, is Dayton in the same boat as we are, as far as a timeline concerned?
Yes, sir. On, 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 on a tax abatement, uh. Uh, procedure, they are, yes, sir. Same chapter of the tax code.
And does that, does that matter if the, um. Industrial park is already in a turs?
Say turs?
Correct. Reinvestment zone?
Well, it. I'm talking. You're talking chapter three eleven, I'm, I'm talking chapter three twelve, okay? Uh, tax abatement reinvestment zone is where I'm, three eleven is a little bit different.
Got it, okay.
Who's in a turs? What's in a turs?
The industrial park.
Yeah, the industrial park.
Well, uh, again. The legislature had, has these procedural. Some, some. Some lawyers call them hurdles to get over and. Uh, they're, they're important. Because. Not everybody is. Fully on board with economic incentives being granted to companies, private companies. With tax dollars, so. Uh, but the, but the law is very clear. We have to follow them where the ultimate agreement that's executed is void.
Right, understood.
It's, it's, it's important for both, both sides of the transaction to take close attention of procedures, I'm sure, I'm sure you. Gentlemen, you know, know and follow in your work.
Absolutely, um. Let me also just kind of, uh. Specify my question as well. Understand that's the, the approval timeline process. Um. But to get kind of the first proposal, I guess is really my question. So if we go back and have, uh, additional conversations. Then we come back to Commissioner's Court with recommendations, is that at the next? Um, meeting then, that we would then? Have that proposal, or will we have a proposal before that, not approved proposal?
Well, the, well, the, the, the Commissioner's Court. Tells the lawyers what to say, and the Commissioner's Court can't really do that until. Until they vote on something, uh, or at least, uh. But here, here's, here's what I want to suggest to the court members. With the. Folks from Colliers listening in. Looks like the company is talking to. City of Dayton. Correct? Gentlemen from Colliers, correct?
Yes.
A, a lot of times on these pitching. On these opportunities to submit proposals rather, rather than receive proposals from a company. Cities and counties sometimes work together, sometimes with the governor's office. Have y'all, have y'all been in contact with the governor's office through the enterprise own work, uh, of the governor's office?
Yes, we have a project manager at the governor's office.
Is the zone?
Yes, we do.
The, uh. Has the city of Dayton said anything about contacting the governor's office? Regarding?
Not yet, we, we are in, we are in communication with the governor's office.
The, the company is.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well. Typically. Typically, you see counties and cities get together and work together and try to come up with something, so if you give us. A week or so, fourteen days to get back to you, would that be fair?
With an offer, I think so. But if you're waiting for fourteen days for us to. Then have another fourteen days, I think we're burning daylight a little bit.
No, I, I would, I would. I would say, the Commissioner's Court members. Um. You might need a special meeting to decide what to do about a proposal, but if within fourteen days from the day, you could do that. The company is saying. A voted-on proposal. By Liberty County, if it happened. For now, that's what the company would accept in terms of your timeline?
And that, and that's what, um, City of Dayton is looking at right now as a special.
That, that would require Commissioner's Court members, you know, to. Get. For our side to get after it and. Decide whether such a proposal was able to be. Put together and. Approved by the county at least. Might require a special meeting.
Yeah, I think, I mean, our, our expectation today was just to get your. That you were gonna reply to the proposal. And then we're happy to meet with you to discuss. Exactly what. You want to propose on, based on what we've asked for, and then it's up to your discretion of what you offer.
Sure, well.
And, and should we, and should we be working through you? Mr. Kimbrough, or?
Mr. Matthew Poston is the county attorney. Is, uh. Ms. McCarty, aren't you called the first assistant?
Yes.
Ms. McCarty, Catherine McCarty's the first assistant. And I'm the. Small-town lawyer from Austin, Texas is just helping out, you know, the really, the really, the leaders are the county attorney's office and Judge Knight. In terms of spokesman, but the court decides it all. The court, no decisions can be made without the Commissioner's Court holding a public recorded vote. All right? It's all just talk until that happens.
Yeah, we understand that.
So. Just so long as the Commissioner's Court knows that if you get into this. Exercise, that the company's looking for a voted-on proposal. If any to happen. Uh. You know. Before what, before the end of. End of the month, is that, is that after, or I'm sorry, it wouldn't be the end of the month, almost the end of the month, or a little bit after, fourteen days or so. Two work weeks, uh, at least. Give us a date.
Sooner the better, yeah.
Give us a date.
Okay. We, we will, we will come, we will come back with the date, a drop dead date that we need. Feedback.
All right.
Next, we're, we're, it's the twenty-eight.
And, and why is it, and why is, why is a drop dead date? Necessary. At this point, if you can tell me that, is that, is that too personal of a question in terms of confidence?
No, absolutely not, we're, we're doing a side-by-side comparison of the shortlist, we're doing due diligence, we're spending money. Doing, doing due diligence, and we need to, we need to come to a decision on our finalist location. That we can. You know, uh. Execute agreements, announce the project, and. Um, start construction as soon as possible.
And our decision criteria, to be clear. Is. Multifaceted. So it's upfront, cost, referring, operating cost, fit with the community, labor. It is a all-encompassing. Others are responding to the RFP as we mentioned earlier. And so. We'd love for. Liberty County and Dayton to participate. It's up to you to make that decision, but we, the client likes the site, I think it'd be very competitive. Uh, with other sites.
When you said a little while ago, Mr. Burnett, that the company was agnostic as to the three sites.
They are.
Agnostic means give or take, no preference, correct?
Not at this time.
Correct, in terms of, in terms of having gone through the entire site selection process to narrow it down to these sites. Um, they look very. Very similar in. Um, in many respects.
Money, let.
That's why you've been shortlisted.
Yeah, money, let, let me ask you a quick question, how far along are these other? Site locations in, at least in the, the realm of what Liberty County is now looking at, are they? Further along, or just now starting to, since we just got our proposal on Friday?
Um, we have received an incentive package. Um, from one of them.
Okay.
So, we're, we're, we're ahead. Uh, elsewhere.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's kind of part of the question regarding timing.
Well, one out of three ain't bad, okay.
Right. Money? Uh, Anthony? Uh, understand, you know, that, uh, I've done a little homework on the company and, uh. Um. We. Pleased with what the company has to offer. But I also understand, you know, there's questions that we needed to ask, and there's laws that we have to, have to be followed. Uh, and, uh, we want to try to work with y'all the best of our abilities. But, uh, bear with us, let us get this. I'm, like I said, I've not even seen a proposal, I've not been in possession of it, so.
Proposal, we need, we need your copy.
Bear with us and we'll do the best we can for y'all, okay?
Absolutely, we, we appreciate it, and, um. Just, just know we're, we're also being pushed, um, from, from our client to make a decision, because. The. The faster they can get to the location, the faster they can construct and faster everybody's up and running and, and producing, so. Um, just. Un, understand where we're, we're coming from as well. We appreciate that.
Well, I have, uh, I have faith in Chuck, and I have faith in my, my county attorney. And, uh, believe me, I'll, I'm, I'm. You'll be, we'll be hearing something, I'll be dealing with something in the very, very near future, okay?
Yep, that sounds good, and if, um, you guys have our contact information. Um, feel free to call, email. Um, we can set up separate. Um, meetings in the meantime, answer any additional questions, our door is open. And the, the faster and the more communication we can have, uh, the better.
Our local, our local, our local Houston team. At Colliers is partnering with us on this, so we can have. You know, we can come see you, money and Tyler can get on a plane. And this is important, so we're happy to answer any questions that get us to the right point.
Y'all are out of Atlanta, Georgia, correct?
That's correct. That's technically where we're based, but. We, we do this all over the world.
Yeah, Colliers, Colliers is the fourth-largest real estate company in the world.
I wanted to. Make sure the Commissioner's Court understood. Who is your client? It's in your, it's on page two of your, your document. Could you? Say the name of your client?
We, we would like to keep that confidential at this time, we, we shared that, just. Um. So you, so you'd know, but that's why we're going under Project Lion.
Well, we. I don't know that we can keep it confidential since you submitted it to the county. Uh, did you say that it's confidential anywhere on the document?
Um, on the first page.
Yeah, it is at the top. Okay.
We, we, we also didn't want you guys to be going into, you know, proposing incentives on a company that you didn't know, and that's why we provided. That information.
Well.
Confidentially.
Texas law, as y'all probably are aware. Have some very specific stuff. That local governments have to follow. Regarding national and international companies. You understand that, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, uh, this is an action item, uh, on the agenda. And what is our proposal now is to continue negotiating. You know, let's allow the, uh, county attorney's office and. And Bickerstaff, uh, to further negotiate. At this point, okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion. Do I throw the county attorney's office outside counsel with Bickerstaff? Do I authorize the county attorney's office outside counsel with Bickerstaff negotiate further?
George. Got a motion from Bruce, a second from Leon. Is there any further discussion? Brother Rick, you got anything?
I'd like to see coordinated meetings with City of Dayton so we can be on the same page with them, so.
Chuck, did you hear that? We'd like to see if we could set up a meeting with City of Dayton, you know, is that, is that possible? You know, because it, let me explain something, fellas, uh with Colliers. In regard to decision, I need seventy two hours. We we come to a decision, I can set up a special meeting within seventy two hours of that decision, okay? So that's where we're, that's where we're aiming toward right now, but I gotta follow the law or Chuck and Catherine and and Matthew are gonna. Say something to me, okay? So that's, that's how it works. So we have a motion from Bruce, a second from Leon for further negotiations. Is there any further discussion? There being none, entertain a vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So okay, that is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh and you.
Thank you, Judge.
Appreciate y'all listening with us. It uh it's good to get to visit with you, get to know you a little bitty. It's by Zoom and y'all are in Atlanta?
Atlanta, baby. Yeah, I'd I'd be there in person today, but I had some uh personal.
Leon, I got talking about wearing a Braves cap on a Zoom meeting, okay?
Well, we won't wear them, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll hook you, we'll hook you, it'll be all right, yeah.
Y'all got, y'all got one last year, you know, we stayed home. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough.
All right.
Making motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn from Bruce. Second from David. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Okay, we are.